We've got such, we're being stared at. I love it. Good evening, everyone. We are graced with the Band of Brothers 12034. We're going to get this meeting started and we're going to have the Band of Brothers present the colors and do the Pledge of Allegiance. I call this meeting to order at 6:30. If we could all please rise.
Under guard! Looking to...
If we could call up Mr. Daniel Lopez, Commander of Band of Brothers 12034. Mr. Lopez, may they be seated?
Thank you. I want to thank Councilmember Robin Carter for bringing this request to the council members and allowing the POW and MIA chair to have a permanent place in the city council chambers. This gives all those who walk through these doors a reminder of the 81,000 men and women that are missing in action. Too often we go through our busy days and forget about all those who have not come home to their loved ones. So on behalf of VFW Post 12034, Band of Brothers, we are honored for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a message here I'd like to read first, and it says, "We are honored to be able to present the first part of the prisoner of war in missing in action POW/MIA memorial that will be displayed in our council chambers around July 4th of this year. We wanted to share with you that are here, the first part of the memorial prior to our nation's Memorial Day observation. As this is only a part of the memorial, we are only allowed to display it for our audience, and as it is not complete, we are not allowing any photographs or pictures out of respect for the dignity of the family that has endured the challenges of having a family member or friend in the MIA or POW category. This is so difficult for them. This follows the same respect given for the POW/MIA table ceremony that is at a Memorial Day ceremony, the same reverence as this time. Our goal is to highlight the over 80,000 POW/MIA individuals. You are not forgotten. I want to thank the, for all of you joining us tonight, and also the VFW Post 12034 Band of Brothers for your service. Thank you." Okay, Dan Harden, would you come up and join us in Daniel Lopez? Hi. At this time, we have a commendation for you, and I'd like to read it at this time. It says, "Whereas more than 82,000 service members who have not returned home has been listed as prisoner of war or missing in action and have too long been forgotten by all their families and friends. And whereas, it is important to instill in the community the significance of the contributions that members of the United States Armed Forces have made in securing and protecting the freedoms that residents enjoy today. And whereas, in 2012, the effort began to place chairs of honor across the United States in sports arenas and stadiums, town halls, and state capitals in remembrance of prisoner of war and missing in action service members, to represent those service members who are unable to fill the seats due to their sacrifices for our country. And whereas, Veterans of Foreign War Post 12034 would like to present a Chair of Honor to the City of Laverne to hold a place of honor in the city council chambers. And whereas, honoring and celebrating the men and women that have served our country in the six branches of the United States Armed Forces has always been paramount to the City of Laverne and our residents. And whereas, to further impart the importance of this gift to serve as a constant reminder of the important role the United States Armed Forces and those that serve have played in the history and development of our country and state as it is being presented during Military Appreciation Month. And now, therefore, that this commemorative, that commemorate, that on this 16th day of May 2022, the City of Laverne proudly accepts the acknowledgement and remembrance of all those who have and continue to serve the community and their country. Let the Chair of Honor be a constant reminder of all the sacrifices made for our country by those still missing American service members. This is dated the 16th of May 2022."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, sir?
I'm going to. Have the mic. You thought you were going to get away with just a few words. Words cannot express the amount of gratitude we owe the men and women of Armed Forces. The City of Laverne has a deep connection with the United States Military Veterans. It is a relationship the city council today and councils of the past have taken very seriously. Some examples: the Military Veterans Banner Program, the staunch support you have shown for the VFW Post 12034, the Band of Brothers, the fundraising and building of the Laverne Veterans Memorial, your attendance at the Veterans Memorial ceremonies, and many other times you have honored veterans in this very room. So tonight, we thank you for accepting the post offer to place a Chair of Honor in the Laverne City Council Chambers. Dan, you want to help me? We're going to uncover the chair here so you can take a good look. Would you like to walk down? Yeah, and as you, I will explain a little bit. The chair is made of walnut, a hardwood. It took two very strong police officers to carry that in here for us. In the middle of the chair, you see the plaque, the POW/MIA, "You Are Not Forgotten." The reason we're asking not to take photographs tonight is because the chair is not complete. The grains you can see are beautiful, but they will be more beautiful after we finish it five more times before that's done. Included with the chair, there are some other accoutrements, and I'm going to explain those to you in just a minute. Here in the council, as we've heard, the Chair of Honor will serve as a permanent memorial to all those who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom, and as a way for the Laverne citizens to honor those brave souls every time they come to the city hall. The Chair, so, is also a symbol that our nation continues to actively seek, locate, and identify prisoners of war or those who are missing in action, and to let them know that there will always be a place when they return home. There are a few guidelines for the Chair of Honor. The seat must be cordoned off to prevent use, so no one will ever sit in this chair unless it's a POW or an MIA. The Chair of Honor is to remain permanently empty to help people remember that even though the soldiers are not here, there's always a space for them. The honored chair should be accompanied by a memorial plaque, that's not here today, and it's a stand that holds that plaque, with the message, "You Are Not Forgotten." Our VFW post will work with city staff to complete the placement of the honored chair in this chamber and to meet the standards that our honored soldiers who are prisoners of war and missing in action deserve. So I think not everyone fully understands, we have two on the monument, two names that are MIA. That would be Lieutenant, let's see, yeah, Lieutenant Colonel, I forgot, James McElvee. He was shot down, he's an Air Force pilot, was shot down over North Vietnam. They have not recovered his remains, they do not know what has happened to him, so he is listed as MIA. The other is Private Alan Townsend. He was MIA during the Cold War. He's also on the memorial. He was, had just finished his training in the Army to be a sonar, or radar man. He was flying with several others to Alaska for his posting when his plane went down over the North Pacific. He is listed in action as MIA, and he is listed as lost at sea. So we have two members of this city that are on that memorial. Our VFW post, or, excuse me, we have one request of you, and that is, the Chair of Honor will leave this space in the council chambers twice a year. On Memorial Day and on Veterans Day, it will hold another place of honor at the Laverne Veterans Memorial during the two important holiday celebrations that we hold there. With that, I would like to ask the post to stand. With that, VFW Post 12034, the Band of Brothers dedicate this Chair of Honor to be placed in the Laverne City Hall Chamber where all citizens can come to honor and remember soldiers that are prisoner of war or missing in action. Thank you.
We have another couple proclamations. Whereas the City of Laverne includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community in building a more perfect union; and whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed and supported; and whereas the Senior Advisory Committee recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible; and whereas the City of Laverne and Senior Advisory Committee can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to the individual needs and preferences, increasing access to services to support aging in place; and whereas we recognize the importance of empowering older Americans to age their way. Whereas we recognize the importance of empowering older Americans to age their way, now we therefore be resolved that on this 16th day of May 2022, the City of Laverne does hereby proclaim May 2022 as the Older Americans Month, encouraging all residents of Laverne to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to older American choices about how they age in their communities, dated this 16th day of May 2022. Who's going to be receiving this? I'll bring it to you. Thank you very much. Would you like to say a word? Okay, well, thank you very much. The next proclamation, this is Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas each year in May, Mental Health Awareness Month is recognized to support efforts at fighting the stigma associated with mental health, providing support, educating the public, and advocating for equal care; and whereas according to the National Institute of Mental Health, studies show there are an estimated 52.9 million adults aged 18 or older in the United States suffering from mental illness, representing over 20% of all U.S. adults; and whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year, and only one out of two people with a serious form of mental illness seeks treatment; and people with mental illness often recover if given the necessary services and supports to their communities; and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many who would benefit from mental health services from seeking help, research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through greater public awareness about mental illness so that there is a change in the negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illness; and whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses; and whereas Tri-City Mental Health delivers mental health services for the City of Laverne and has been the designated mental health authority for residents serving children, youth, adults, and older adults alike. Tri-City remains a steadfast community partner, supporting and sustaining an integrated system of care for individuals experiencing mental health conditions and their families. And now, therefore, be resolved that on this 16th day of May 2022, the City of Laverne does hereby proclaim May 22 as Mental Health Month. We call upon Laverne citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit the community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness, reducing stigma and discrimination, and promoting appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness, dated this 16th day, May 2022. Would you like to come up? Thank you. Would you like to say a word?
Yes. Good evening and happy Mental Health Awareness Month. I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Carter for being on our board, and thank you for your leadership in this process. Everything I had rehearsed in my head, you just read it all out loud over here, so there's not much I can say. But I want to thank the City of Laverne for helping us fight stigma for mental health. One in four individuals will experience symptoms of a mental illness in a given year. So thank you so much for being, for bringing your awareness to your community, and thank you for helping us fight the stigma. Because of stigma, people don't get the help they need, and we really need to have people come and get the help that they need. So thank you so much, it's an honor for Tri-City to receive this tonight.
Well, thank you, and it's a great partnership we've had for many, many years, and without it, we would be a very troubled city, so thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
We'll call Mr. Russi.
Yes, Councilmember Lau. Councilmember Crosby.
Here.
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Mayor Protem Davis.
Present.
Mayor Hepburn.
Present.
Great, thank you. We have one announcement.
I think, yeah, I think we could probably take a couple-minute recess if some of the people would like to leave. I know the Band of Brothers, I'm sure you have other things to do unless you'd like to sit to this exciting meeting regarding water and restrictions and things like that, but you're always welcome, but I think you probably have better things to do. So let's take a five-minute recess and we'll re-adjourn. Everyone, we're going to start the meeting back up in a second, like now. We're going to call the meeting back to order at 6:56 PM. We have, next on the agenda is announcement and upcoming events, Mr. May, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, Laverne residents. I just want to talk about a couple of things that are coming up. Starting next month, from June 1st through August 14th, we are going to have our annual summer reading program, this is system-wide, and it's called the Summer Discovery Program. It's, it's going to be, it's available for adults, teens, kids, babies, and toddlers. There are going to be game cards and game card challenges that involve reading, reading books, or doing activities. You can do, read six books, or a combination of three books, or three activities. This can be done online, or you can also stop by the local library and pick up the game cards and things like that. So again, that's from June 1st through August 14th. And also, as part of the summer reading program, we're making, we're providing volunteer activities for local teen students. This applies for ages 14 through 17. It's a perfect opportunity for school kids to get their community service hours. There will be a volunteer orientation on June 1st from 6 to 7. Our teen services librarian, Tom Cornicelli, he will be directing that, talking about assignments and schedules. The only thing that's, the only requirement that we have this year is that the students need to provide proof of vaccination. Now, we're not photocopying anything, we're not filing anything, you just need to provide a card or a note from a doctor showing that that person has been vaccinated. That is the only requirement. Also, our, friends at the Laverne Library Book Sale is ongoing. We have expanded it into our lobby, added some additional tables, more books. The sales are doing very well, so, Bob, I think you need to... Yes. We're forcing down the money just about four times a day, so that's a good sign. People are buying, and we've got a lot of variety, a lot of DVDs, a lot of books for all ages. We've got CDs, movies, children's books, adult books, fiction, nonfiction, young adult books. We've got basically anything for everybody, so that's basically, so please come on by and check us out.
Thank you, Mr. May. Anybody else in the audience have any announcements or online? Mr. Bowen.
Good evening, Mr. Elected Mayor, Miss Council. My name is Rick Bowen, I'm Chair of the Laverne Coalition of Concerned Citizens. Excuse me. On Thursday, June 2nd, beginning at 6:30 PM, LV3C will sponsor its last election forum before the June 7th Election Day. Location will be the Rock of the Foothills, Bush Hall, corner of Wheeler and Baseline. Current elected mayor, Tim Hepburn, running for District 4 council seat, and current councilmember, Mayor Davis, running for District 1 council seat, have both agreed to attend a Q&amp;A forum in order to answer, in order to answer audience questions from various, from all residents. All LV3C members are invited, as are Laverne residents. Seating will be limited, so please plan accordingly. This is planned as a very interactive program, so that all voters that want to ask questions will have an opportunity to ask those critical questions that are important to them. So we look forward to a very informative meeting that evening. Thank you in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Anyone else from the audience, or others? No, nothing? Mr. Crosby.
Yes, just happy to announce Benita Girls Softball made it to CIF finals, and the game they will play will be either this Friday night, or Saturday at 9:30 AM at Bill Barber Park in Irvine. They will find out tomorrow, because the actual team they'll be playing against is playing right now. And they wanted to schedule either Friday night or Saturday morning, because the high school has their prom Saturday night. So the last time Benita Girls Softball has been in CIF finals is 43 years ago. So...
My graduating year, 1979. Very proud of the fact that the girls in my graduating class won that CIF championship.
And if you want tickets, it said to go to gofan.co. It's $5 for kids 5 to 13, and students with IDs, and it's $12 for adults. Then, they will play, they've already, will play in the first round of the state tournament, which will be held Tuesday, May 31st at 4 o'clock, and it'll be determined where they play there. If they win the first round, which I'm always confident, they will go to the regional semis, which will be Thursday, June 2nd, and the championship round is Saturday, June 4th. So go out, root on your Benita Girls. Softball has been real exciting the last couple of years, starting with the junior program, and now the high school program. And so, again, Friday night or Saturday morning at Bill Barber Park, and tomorrow morning, the high school announced where it's at. What time?
We're going to be testing all of you in five minutes, so I hope you got all those dates right. Thank you, Mr. Crosby. I've just got a real quick little blurb here, and this is not as mayor, but this is as a resident. Code of Fair Campaign Practices. We've been having some issues, there's been a lot of social media up in District 3, and I think as a community, we can do better. I just want to reiterate what we signed when we all signed up to be elected office, to run for an office. I shall conduct my campaign openly and publicly discussing the issues as I see them, presenting my record and policies with sincerity and frankness, and criticizing without fear or favor the record and policies of my opponents or political parties that merit this criticism. I shall not use or permit the use of character defamation, whispering campaigns, libel, slander, or scariest attacks on any candidate of his or her personal or family life. I shall not use or permit any appeal to negative prejudice based on candidate's actual or perceived race, religious creed, color, national origin, ancestry, physical disability, mental disability, medical condition, marital status, age, sexual orientation, sex, including gender identity, or any other characteristic set forth in Section 12940 of the Government Code, or associated with another person who has any of the actual or perceived characteristics set forth in the Section 12940 of the Government Code. I shall not use or permit any dishonest or unethical practice that tends to corrupt or undermine our American system of free elections, or that hampers or prevents the full and free expression of the will of the voters, including acts intended to hinder or prevent any eligible person from registering to vote, enrolling to vote, or voting. I shall not corral selection help or campaign contributions for myself or for any other candidate from my employees. I shall immediately and publicly repudiate support deriving from any individual or group that resorts on behalf of my candidacy, or in opposition to that of my opponent, to the methods and tactics that I condemn. I shall accept responsibility to take firm action against any subordinate who violates any provision of this code or the laws governing elections. I shall defend and uphold the right of every qualified American voter to full and equal participation in the electoral process. I, the undersigned candidate for the election to public office in the State of California Treasurer, chairperson of a committee making any independent expenditures, hereby voluntarily endorse, subscribe to, and solemnly pledge myself to conduct my campaign in accordance with the above principles and practices. Let's keep it that way. We're a small town, we're still going to be family and friends after this. Let's stop it. Thank you. We move on to Consent Calendar. Do we have anything pulled, Mr. Russi?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Then, I need a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, which includes city council minutes, register of audited demands, and armored vehicle replacement, plus some staff recommendations.
And I'll second that.
Vote, please. Thank you. Mr. Russi, we're going to move a couple items around. We're going to move Item 7 right now to public hearing for the annual public protest hearing for Old Town Laverne Business Improvement District. Yes. Then we'll move the water conservation ordinance. With that, who is going to report on this? Is it going to be Mr. Shear?
It's going to be started by Director Shear, and then it will have Craig get up afterwards and give a report, the annual report on dividend.
Good evening, Mr. Shear.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This is the annual public protest hearing for the Old Town Laverne Business Improvement District. At your last meeting, you set this public hearing with a resolution, and so tonight's a public hearing before it. Staff will, or the Board Chair, Craig Walters, will provide you with an overview of the projects and the events that have occurred in the district over the last year. Then I'll come back up and give you some details about the proposed budget for next year, and then make a recommendation on re-establishing the district... year, and then make a recommendation on re-establishing the district boundaries and the assessment formula for the district, and then obviously hold the public hearing for that with the resolution attached. So, the district was originally formed in 1986 by the council, and so ever since then there has been this annual meeting. And so, I'd like to invite District Chair Craig Walters up to go over some of those events that have occurred over the last year.
Craig. Mayor, City Council, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Walters.
To be back here again. I happened to be on the council in 86 when the district was formed, and those of you who were around back then, there's a couple of us, Muir, you were here, I know. Old Town Laverne was a lot different back then. And I think we had two restaurants and an old bookstore, used bookstore, and a hardware store, and a collection of other small businesses. I, I honestly can't remember a time since then that Old Town was more vibrant than it is today. And if you were around on Saturday, this last Saturday during the Wine Walk, you saw that in action. The last two years have been very difficult for, you know, owner-operated businesses along with everybody else. And I'm very pleased that the vast majority of businesses in Old Town were able to weather that storm, and they're now coming back. There's some unintended consequences that happened as a result of that, namely sidewalk dining. If you've been downtown the last, last week, you've seen the new patio in front of Cafe Wong. Beautiful. And it was in full action on Saturday night. I, I see that as a great addition. Everybody really likes the street atmosphere that we have down there now. And so, I, I see a lot of bright future for Old Town. This last year, as we were coming out of the pandemic, we were able to have, we've had two car shows last December, and then the one about a month or so ago, the Cool Cruise. Both huge success. We are now at the end of our contract with our, our current vendor for car shows, and so we'll be looking to either re-up with them or go out to bid and, and see who else might want to take it on. But the participants of that car, those car shows are very enthusiastic about being in Old Town. It's one of their favorite places, the tree-lined streets, they like the atmosphere, they like the people that come. So, that's a, that's a huge plus. We had other activities, traditional activities, like sidewalk coloring contests, Halloween coloring contests. But the big one, and something that's really transformed how Old Town, the business association has been able, and business district have been able to operate, is the initiation of the Wine Walk eight years ago, actually 10 years ago with two years off. This year, we were sold out once again. We had 1,000 people in Old Town. The biggest challenge we had this year is a number of the businesses and our food suppliers, food partners, have difficulties with, with employees. And so, we had several people that would have liked to participate, but they just, they're not back up to full staffing. So, we were down a few of the stops, but I don't think the, the attendees really noticed that. Everybody was having a great time. It was a hot evening, but cooled down, and, and everybody, I think, enjoyed, enjoyed the evening, you know, wonderfully. So, with the Wine Walk, and then three years ago, the Beer Walk, which we hope to bring back this, this coming fall, it's given us a way to create additional revenues. And to me, that, that's real important, because we can't just be dependent on the city, always going to the city saying, why don't you do this, why don't you do that? So we've been able to, with these additional revenues, put skin in the game. We put money into the tree lights. We currently are in line to put a significant amount of money into the new Monero Square stage and revitalization. So, folks in Old Town, businesses, I think, realize that it really is a partnership. And along those lines, I'll just say, I say this every time, but the partnership between the district and the staff and the city council, I think, just continues to improve. This last Saturday, the staff was fully engaged. We had police department presence, for the first time, we had fire department presence, had some EMTs walking around in case anybody was overcome with heat or whatever it might be. Public Works, once again, did a great, great job supplying the, the staff and the support we needed. But first and foremost, I've, I've gotta thank once again Committee Development Department, led by Eric, but also with Natalie Hyatt and Candace Bocock. They really make the thing happen. We don't have any paid staff. We had one individual that is associated with a business that did some of the legwork, but really without the staff, we couldn't do it. So, I want to thank you for allowing them to participate, and hopefully the future for Old Town will, you know, continue to be very bright. So, are there any questions or anything?
Yes. Hi, Craig. I worked on your first campaign in 82.
And I won that one, so thank you.
You did! Yes. Thank you for your leadership, because you have been doing this for quite a while. And, you know, as we use the different businesses downtown, I get my hair cut down there, and you, they always talk about how great you are, because you're a very well, soft-spoken person, that you work with people, you don't demand.
You don't see me all the time.
And so, thank you for that, because our downtown has thrived over the years, you know, and even through COVID. Our staff, I'm so proud of our staff, because they worked so hard to make sure that downtown stayed open during COVID. So, thank you, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. And I, I think the thing, what I always say is it takes a village to run anything, and this is a well-oiled machine, between our Public Works, between our Community Development, between our police, our fire, our staff, everybody's engaged. No matter what you put on, we try to make it a success, and I, and every time it is. And people keep, I was at Chase's, this was a few weeks ago, I was talking to a person from Glendora, then I think it was a person from San Dimas, and a person from Claremont, all in the same night. It's like, we are a destination point, and it's taken years to do that, but by the success of you guys and offering those great businesses and the great restaurants and, and the shops and the clothing shops and the jewelry shops, people come here to do just that, spend their money, which is, which is awesome. But a great job by you, Craig.
Thank you.
As usual, you've been doing it for many years, but you're doing it extremely well.
Thank you. And obviously, I would recommend approval of the continuation of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Shear.
Just real briefly on the budget. As Craig mentioned, there are two capital improvement programs that are listed in next year's, this coming year's budget, and that totals a $40,000. Half of it for the Monero Square upgrade, which is on the cusp of being able to occur. Excuse me. And also, the additional extension of the tree lights throughout Old Town. It's been a priority for the businesses to add upon what we've built down there already. And so, the, the Monero Square, like I mentioned, is moving forward. So with those two one-time projects, the budget for next year is showing a deficit of about $25,000 between the revenues from the events that are planned and the expenditures. But they, these have been planned for a long time. They are in the capital improvement program for this next coming year. And so, luckily, the, the revenues from this current year, specifically the Wine Walk on Saturday night, will help pay for almost the majority of that shortfall for next year. So they won't be dipping too far into their reserves, which are healthy at this point. So, the Old Town Business Improvement District, at their May 2nd meeting, recommended that the council approve the prepared budget as part of the packet. So with that, staff's recommending that you approve the annual report, you approve the draft budget for next year, you also re-establish the district boundaries and the assessment formula after holding a public hearing on this item. And with that, staff's happy to answer any questions.
I think we'll go to public hearing and then afterwards. Let's open up the public hearing. Do we have any comments or on this issue? Before you? Anybody hand raised? Well, that was quick. Are you sure? Okay, going once, going twice, gone. We'll close the public hearing, we'll bring it back up to the dais. Any comments or questions for Director Shear? Then I would entertain a motion.
Well, I guess, before we make a motion, I, I wanna second everything everybody said, and I get the fact that it feels a little odd not having time allocated for public comments. It came back awfully quick. So, so we have to get used to that occasionally, that those things happen. But I agree, I, I think that, you know, I'm in full support of the district being redefined and supporting their budget and everything, 'cause, 'cause, you know, I was a kid during the time, late 70s, early 80s, when Old Town had lost its, its joie de vivre, or its joy of life, and became sort of a deserted area. I mean, I used to go to Western Auto all the time as a kid, 'cause they had every part I needed. But, but I'm glad to see it thriving, and whatever we can do to make sure that that relationship stays strong and Old Town remains robust is awesome.
We just need to expand the footprint a little bit.
Yeah, towards the metro station.
And the other ways, too. There's places. Hopefully, we'll do that, keep expanding. With that, any other comments?
All right, I'll make a motion that we, let's see. Where am I? We received and filed a report from the dividend for prior year's activities, we approved the proposed dividend budget, and we approved re-establishment of the district boundaries and assessment formula, adopting Resolution Number 2223, approving the dividend annual report. Those other letters in there were silent, just so folks know.
Second.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Walters. We are gonna move to, we're gonna move number eight, Item 8. Urgency Ordinance Number 1111, Ordinance 1112, Mending Chapter 13.5 Laverne Municipal Code Relative of Water Conservation Use and Restrictions. Director Igo.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I'll be giving you a overview, again, of our water conservation, current state, and also asking for a decision to be made on our urgency ordinance. So, as discussed, the April 18th City Council meeting, California is moving into its third dry year, with drought restrictions being imposed at various degrees. It was the same meeting that council enacted Phase 5 of our own water conservation use and restriction ordinance, and imposed California drought penalty surcharges to be effective July 1, 2022, and further requires customers to reduce water usage by 20% based on 2020 data. Based on our reliance on state water, project water, and the reduction from Department of Water Resources, it was additionally discussed that a one-day-per-week watering restriction was likely to be imposed by Three Valleys Municipal Water District and MWD, Metropolitan Water District. With this, with this decision now solidified, and the volumetric reduction of 55 gallons per person per day not currently being adopted, the city must now update its urgency ordinance to manage this new mandate. It was further discussed that a $2,000 per acre foot penalty will be imposed on agencies not in compliance with this methodology, and based off of the penalties that we will receive, we will use those funds to pay for these $2,000 per acre foot penalties that could be imposed on us. Any additional funds that could be received would be used to develop programs for turf replacement, outreach material, and giveaways such as positive shut-off nozzles. This will be brought forward to City Council, depending on the amount of money that would be needed for these programs, as it was done in the past. As a reminder, hand-watering of trees and properly operated drip irrigation systems are exempt, along with the high-fire-hazard severity zone. The city does also have an additional appeals process, as was adopted last time and used last time, for citizens to come forward and basically allow for an exemption for various water usage. So this process is still in place. The very high-fire-hazard severity zone, say that 10 times fast, will be the only exception that will not be allowed an exemption, because an exemption will be, already be allowed through this process tonight. What the, with that, the very high-fire-hazard zone is generally bound from baseline going north and the easterly and westerly boundaries of the city. So basically, picture everything west of, or sorry, north of baseline. Per Section 15.37.20 of Chapter 15.37 of the Laverne Municipal Code, the territory described as the very high-fire-hazard severity zone was established, and a map is provided within the agenda packet. Generally speaking, areas north of baseline outside of the city boundaries, such as the county areas, that, but receive water from the city will be ident, are identified in the CAL FIRE map, which is also attached in this packet. Based on the decision tonight, the city will utilize several avenues to reach residents and business owners of these new restrictions. This will be done through various noticing processes, such as the U.S. Postal Service, social media, flyers, and the website. With a recent update to the website, and a continuous change in conservation, we took the opportunity to enhance our conservation page. A big shout-out to our staff, Christie Sanchez and Tracy Castello, who spent a significant amount of time and continue to spend time on updating this webpage, so you will continue to see updates as part of this process. One thing of significance, significance to note is the option to sign up for notifications. This is something that's new, that allows people to basically click on a link to put in their, either their email and/or their phone number, to get notifications as we update our conservation page. Additionally, there are several links on, on our conservation page, such as rebates. I have some flyers here from the CAL FIRE webpage, so this will be up there as well. This basically describes how we need to maintain our trees during drought conditions, so that will be up there as well. We will also have the watering days, so we'll have basically a small snippet of what a week would look like, and what those watering days can look like at a quick glance for residents. And based on the decision tonight, the conservation page will update by 9 o'clock tomorrow to reflect whichever ordinance is decided upon tonight. As we continue to meet with Three Valleys Municipal Water District and Metropolitan Water District, updates, updates to this page and various outreach methods will be used to continue to make sure that we reach the residents. Based on the information we have available today, we are asking council to adopt one of the ordinances before you. Option 1, or Ordinance 1111, modifies our existing ordinance to reflect the one-day-per-week watering, with even addresses on Tuesday and odd addresses on Thursday, eight minutes per station, and provides an exemption for the fire hazard zone to reduce by 20%. Option 2, or Ordinance 1112, still modifies the existing ordinance to reflect the one-day-per-week watering, but with the exemption for the fire hazard zones to only be allowed to water three days, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, five minutes per station. There are a few things to consider when deciding on the appropriate approach. Based on conversations with our fire chief and fire marshal, when it comes to setting restrictions in the very fire, very high-fire-hazard area, it can be challenging when it comes to setting specific dates and times. This is due to a myriad of things, which may include types of plant material, varying water demands on those types of material, and the simple nature of our climate, as we saw with the high temperatures this weekend. However, when speaking with Three Valleys Municipal Water District and Metropolitan Water District, they prefer setting specific dates and times that it's easier to track and to enforce. So at the end of the day, I will tell you that MWD Board has already authorized our general manager to enact the 55 gallons per person per day mandate anytime in September, based off of information and numbers that they receive from us. So that still can be imposed on us. If that is imposed, we would not see that until probably December-ish of this year. So, you know, a lot of decisions to be made on your part, but again, this is the information that we have today, and it changed just from a month ago when I first presented this information. So with that, I will take any and all questions.
And it will change again.
Yes, it will.
So in your estimation, along with our fire chief, the fact that less restrictions on the days of watering, especially for the high-fire-zone areas, we still, would be the, would be the method of choice, is that correct?
Which one, the?
1111. 1111, the first one.
Ultimately, it's your decision.
I understand, but...
But based off, based off of what we are...
Based on our fire issues, we've all been there, I've been there at least twice, and it's been almost catastrophic. So, we want the least restrictive in order to be able to protect the properties. But, and that would be 111, where the other one would be more restrictive with more days and set, okay.
That's correct. 1111 is less restrictive, and 1112 is more restrictive.
Okay.
And the only thing I will add to that is that last point that Director Igo made, and that is, it'll, what, what it'll ultimately come down to is how much we collectively reduce the use, because the, the overarching issue that exists is, they could impose 55 gallons per person per day, which, it gives perspective. Right now, we average is 157?
Yeah, so it's a 48% reduction in general.
Significant reduction. So it's gonna be a matter of staying away from that, is how well we regulate ourselves going forward.
And that's a very important point, because we all know we're in a drought, we have to reduce, and we have to water sparingly, but, yeah, we all have to do our part. It's just, I call them almost dracon... But, uh, yeah, we all have to do our part. It's just, I call them almost draconian, but it's where we're at. It's where we're at right now. Our host state.
Yes.
Unfortunately, we don't have desalination plants, we don't have pump water from Missouri or Tennessee. We have what we have, so unfortunately, we're, we're in the drought state, but, uh... Do we have questions for staff? Mr. Crosby.
I do. Um, no matter which ordinance we, we take, um, and/or limiting days or times, there still has to be a reduction of twenty percent. So even if they're watering three days a week at certain times, there has to be a reduction of twenty percent. Even if there was, uh, no, uh, restriction on, on the days in the fire zone only, it's still, they, both lower Laverne and upper Laverne has to have the same reduction of twenty percent.
In general, yes. So the up, so north of baseline, they would have to still reduce by twenty percent, either option that's decided upon tonight. So even if they're doing three days per week, there still have to be a twenty percent reduction. It's a little bit different for the lower Laverne, it's still one day per week.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, they will probably see a larger reduction because most of your outdoor, um, usage in irrigation is, is the usage you're using in your home. So sixty percent of your usage is from your home is tied to your outdoor irrigation. If you don't have that, then yeah, it's gonna probably get a little bit more challenging for you, but if you have any type of landscaping outside, reaching twenty percent will probably prove pretty easy. Your lawn won't look great, but you will still have a pretty good reduction.
But just wanna make sure that we still have to reduce no matter.
Yes.
Um, the days of the week.
Yes.
I, I guess, just to belabor the point and to, to try to make it as clear as possible, this is a time where we're calling everybody in Laverne to come together and help the city reduce by twenty percent. Some people may be able to and hopefully will cut more than twenty percent. So those people who ask for exemptions to, for either drip line or for high-fire or to water trees may not be able to achieve all their twenty percent, but hopefully they're cutting also so that as a city, we can achieve that twenty percent and then nothing beyond that should happen. Unless and until the state realizes that the drought is worse than it is currently, then we need to make additional steps.
Yes, so we all should be doing our part. I agree with that. I will tell you, the challenge is, is that the, the statement for, you know, us to reduce, we can reduce, but if, we'll say, other areas that are fed state water project don't reduce, we could still be in a bind.
Right.
Um, hopefully, our goal is that everyone is doing their part across the state. Keep our fingers crossed, and then we'll all move forward.
So your point is well-made, which is while Laverne needs to band together and make sure we take care of ourselves to achieve that twenty percent savings, we also need to band with everybody else in the state of California unless and until we get to the point where we start collecting water that falls as rain rather than only waiting for it to be snow. So you have your ideas of water conservation, I have mine, because there's a whole lot of water that falls on California that we just let it rush out to the ocean through these cement channels that we should figure out different ways, because water's important, it's cheap, but it's very important, and we, and we need to find innovative ways to capture that stuff.
Yeah, and I will applaud the citizens of Laverne. In twenty-seventeen, they banded together and they did significant reductions, so we're asking them to, to do that again this time. Again, it's gonna be a challenging time, but we, you know, hopefully, we can all band together and continue to do this.
I'll go back to my earlier comment, share a shower. Oh, sorry, we haven't gone, we haven't gone to public comment yet. I should usually wait till afterwards.
Councilor Law.
It was, it's not a question, but, um, I just wanted to comment on the, the two resolutions, just a spell check thing. There's a Herbie, not a hereby, in multiple places. But I did wanna also just, as I was looking and you were talking about the website, I did wanna shout out if people have not taken a look at it, it is much more easily navigable than the prior one. Um, and there are quite a few different programs on there. I know it's not what we all wanna hear, but water is limited, so take advantage of what opportunities are available, and I appreciate everything that being very clearly laid out with links to everything. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Surprise, surprise. Okay, um, you know, the hard part was, I just got back from Gettysburg in Washington, D.C. The greenery there, my daughter and I were talking about how beautiful and open their land is, and I told her, "Take in all the green now because we're not gonna see it here." But, um, a couple of questions for you is, first, what, you know, I think about is the average resident, you know, I don't feel that's the biggest waste of water. I really feel that the business parks around that have all this greenery, and, um, I even know my church down in baseline, we have so much greenery. Is that gonna be monitored and talked to them too? Because you see at nighttime driving by and there's water running in the street. What are we gonna do to help that?
Yeah, so part of that will be through our administrative process, we'll be able to find them. So they, they are still held to the same restrictions to one day per week. Our hope is that they will be in compliance, but if they're not, then we will use our administrative citation process. Hopefully, we can just notify them and they'll be in compliance, but if not, then we can go through our administrative citation process. I will tell you that the State, uh, Water Resource Control Board has been tasked by the governor to evaluate non-essential turf, which is in essence those parks. So that could change here in the next month or two, um, to potentially eliminate that. So, um, as of right now, they're still held to the same standards of one day per week.
Okay, and could you please go into, uh, say, city parks? I know at our youth and family, youth and, um, sports organization, we were talking a little bit about what happens for the baseball fields, the parks. Could you talk about how that is gonna be maintained?
Yeah, so we'll, we will do our part to reduce our water usage, um, for a lot of our parks. We do have trees in there, and so since trees are generally exempt, we don't have a method to water them without our irrigation system, but we will still be reducing significantly in our parks. They will not be as green as you are used to, so we hope that you all will understand that we're doing what we can, but we do still need to maintain our parks in some general fashion.
Okay, and then going back to, you talked about the drip feed system. So those of all of the community that did the drip feed in twenty-sixteen around that time period, now, they can do an exemption, uh, form if possible?
They don't need to. They're already exempt. Hand-watering of trees and those drip irrigations are already exempt. Now, if, we'll just say that you still have to reduce twenty percent, but because you've done these things already and you can't make that twenty percent reduction, then yes, you would have to go through that process saying, "I already reduced my water usage, can I get an exemption?" But generally speaking, if you can reduce your twenty percent, you do need to do nothing with those.
Okay, okay, and then, um, the hillside erosion, that is a big area, and I'm thrilled to, excuse me, I'm thrilled to hear what you said about the, um, area up north, because we do have to worry about that. There's homes built throughout that hillside, and so we need to preserve that and for the safety too, because it's very hard to even get insurance up there. Let's see. Okay, now, fifty-five gallon, if we get to September, the mandate fifty-five gallons per person, per household is, um, doesn't it take five gallons of water to flush a toilet?
It shouldn't, I hope not.
Not that much?
If you have that toilet, we should be, we should be talking.
Okay.
Let's replace that.
I heard that once and I thought, "Well, fifty-five gallons." Two gallons? Two gallons?
Less than two, yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, some more or even less.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's still a significant reduction, so based off of, you know, last year's usage, it's a forty-eight percent reduction across the board for the city.
Forty-eight?
So, yeah, generally speaking, again, it's, if, if you're an average user, you would need to reduce your water by almost fifty percent to be in compliance with this fifty-five gallons-per-person-per-day. And generally, that's gonna be just completely eliminating outdoor irrigation. So if you completely eliminate that, then we'll be in compliance, but it's a lot of dead material.
Okay, thank you for your answers.
I just have a follow-up, um, based on what Robin was mentioning about the business parks and everything else. I noticed that in the rebate section, there is a commercial rebate information. Is that information gonna be part of the campaign when you go out?
Yes, we'll be pushing all that, and, and I will say, generally speaking, I know not everyone has access to, um, computers, but that's the way a lot of people work, the MWD works through that. Um, you can call them and work through that, but we're gonna be pushing everyone to our website, to those links, so that they can hopefully access that material to them.
Okay, great, and then if there isn't, then perhaps there is some way we can do a workshop or a place where people can use a computer, maybe come in and do that.
The library.
Yeah, the library would be a perfect spot to use that.
But help walk them through it, because I know that seems like extra work, but if that's what it's gonna take to help.
Yeah, if someone wants to come in, we can try to work through that process with them.
Okay.
Um, and hopefully, we can get them through that fairly quickly, but it's a fairly straightforward process, or they can call Metropolitan Water District and they can help guide them through that process, because it's really their program, they're gonna be easily guided through them by metropolitan staff.
Okay, great, thank you.
It's just about reeducating all of us again to what we used to do a number of years ago, which a lot of us took our turf out, put hard surfaces in. Then LA County wanted to charge us for the hard surfaces, it was wonderful, it's great. But anyway, you guys are doing a great job, I think it's very important. Our new website's up, I think that we need to get any creative ideas is wonderful, you know, because we have gray water, certainly like we were talking about gray water and things that you could reuse and put on your roses or whatever to, you know, not let it go down the drain. So, uh, we appreciate that. So we need to open up, any other questions for Director Igo? We need to open up our public, uh, public hearing. We're gonna open up a public hearing now. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Ms. Anderson.
Anna Anderson, Salone Drive. I prefer that we go with letting the people decide where they're gonna use their water from. You know, instead of saying, "Okay, you can only," I live in a high, high-fire area, "It's only three days a week." Well, let us decide if we wanted to, um, take shorter showers, you know, use water from our faucets to water our plants or whatever, and let us water when we want.
Or shower with a neighbor, or whatever, as Mr. Davis said.
I have to, I have to give my puppy a shower, but that's about it.
I wasn't directing it at anybody, I was just throwing it out there.
So, um, that's what I would prefer, because, you know, we all just have different landscaping and plants. There's some plants that have to be watered every day or they're gonna die. So I would rather give them a cup of water or, you know, water those plants every day and let the other ones go that don't. I mean, we should be able to do that ourselves. If, as long as we're getting, you know, lowering our water costs by, our water gallons by twenty percent, then we shouldn't have to be told when to water. It's ridiculous. We didn't before, we didn't have that before. And, um, I guess we can all do it, we did it before, so let's, let's, let's everybody who has a home and knows their home and knows their plants just figure it out themselves.
We just have to have more deodorant, just like the French.
The what?
More deodorant, like the French.
Okay. You know, you can put a, you can put a bucket in the shower with you and water your plants that way too. That's what I had to do last time. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cabaldon. It's all that campaign walking.
Might be. Maybe I should behave better, I guess. On a serious note, uh, the water, um, restriction is, is obviously a big deal for everybody, but I think we need to be looking at where we're at with other things that we do that might cost water. So a question I would have is, what does the impact of a fire have on our water usage? And when I bring that up, I talk about, you know, the, um, the golf course, Sierra Laverne, and the fact that that still has not been addressed, even though it's been brought up many times, and why maybe a bulldozer around the perimeter is to kind of mitigate some of the fire risk of all those residents that are in a high-fire risk too, even though they're not on the east or westernmost borders. Maybe we should consider that. Additionally, I don't think that, um, we should be levying any fines against anybody in the mobile home parks, period, end of story. I brought that up last time. I think there's, there can't be this blanket approach to this. These people have limited incomes, they have limited lifestyles, all they wanna do is kind of get through their days, and to burden them with any of this, I think, is, is kind of selfish. Additionally, I look at all the commercial landscapes around here that are all green. I would suggest that maybe part of our, our plan, our planning and our code for that down the road is more of what they see in Arizona. If we're gonna continue to deal with this drought and our state's not gonna help us, then we have to help ourselves, then let's start building it into how our city is developing. I look around the Target, um, uh, property, I look around some of these other properties, and they have high bluffs with a lot of green and the sprinklers to keep them looking great. We can find alternative ways to make them look beautiful that we should be considering, so we look down the road as opposed to just worrying about this year, let's worry about the next ten years, because I don't think this is gonna go away. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nobody, there's only three people. Uh, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring back the deists. That was a, commercial properties, um, like our grocery stores that use a lot of water, especially in the prep areas and things like that, where, where are they with, with their restrictions? Obviously, we're all gonna restrict as, as customers, but we have some, you know, multiple grocery stores that use a tremendous amount of water every day.
Yeah, so as long as they're using it internally, I mean, again, this is a, it's a blanket approach to reduction. However, we still have a process to allow them to come for an exemption. So if they say we've already implemented, um, water-saving measures and devices, here's what we've done, then we can go through that process and we can, we can either allow for that or, you know, say, "No, you, you need to do more."
But even with that, the exemption of the one-day-a-week would not apply, correct?
To.
To the commercial properties that are on foothill because they're not outside of the exclusion zone.
Correct, it applies, yeah, they, they are still required to do one day per week. Yeah, so regardless of what they're doing, and if they're in the commercial area, their irrigation has to be reduced to one day per week. But anything internal, if they've done more, they can provide, they can, they can apply for, um, an exemption. No different than the mobile home parks. If, again, I completely agree that where can they reduce, right? If there's opportunity, hopefully they can find it. If not, they can still go through our exemption process.
The nice thing about the mobile home communities are the fact they have smaller postage-stamped lawns and things, which is good. And I would imagine more hand-watering for pots and things like that, but, uh, still, it is, it is a concern.
But even in those cases, where they have tree strip, uh, lawn strips that might be bounding their properties, those will be restricted to one day.
And then watering the trees, they can keep the trees and everything else. Okay, thank you. Council, any comments or? Regarding the, I think the golf course is the one.
Yeah, the only thing I would add regarding that is we have met with the representative and we are going through the, um, fuel modification and abatement process with the county, and I think meeting is set for the next couple of weeks. They are within their timeframe of alleviating the, uh, the transfer fuels as well as the weeds that have exceeded a certain level and are within a certain distance of properties. They will also be looking at some of the trees along with our fire marshal that they feel need to be taken out. So it was a good productive meeting that we had with them roughly a week ago now.
Thank you. Council.
Yeah, I would like to see, uh, our city look at, I know it's expensive, the initial, but I think with water problems, it's gonna be continued with water, is I would love to see our city do something like Rancho's done. They use river rock and they go up like a hillside and come around, or even in the parkways, it's on the ground, comes around, still has a plant for drip feed, but it's mostly river rock. And it's, um, just beautiful to look at, but you, they use no water on it. And there's quite a bit, if you go up Milliken or Day Creek, it's beautiful. So I would love to see us, you know, put some money towards something like that and, um, start considering smaller areas to do and build it up over the years. That's my.
Thank you. Councilor Law.
Further comments, I think we just need to figure out which one of these.
What we're gonna do. Mr. Crosby, no comments?
Uh, no, and just, uh, my only comment would, would be go to option number one, but still remind everybody that the reduction still needs to be, uh, twenty percent. That, uh, I think that's the, the key piece. No matter how many days we pick, it just still has to be a reduction. And this is not something that everybody enjoys or will enjoy. It's just a state where we, we are at, you know, we had early rain and then the highest point ever of no rain during our rainy season. And, um, that's, that's the, the hardest part.
You know, I have a question going back to this. What Anna said does make sense to me. Twenty, why can't we look at just doing, you know, mandate twenty percent reduction at every household and not give them a day they have to water? It worked last time we did it, didn't it?
This is being mandated on us, we don't have a choice.
That these are the only two options? We cannot look at a third option?
The only, uh, the only reason we have an option is because we have a designated area that has a high-fire zone. Otherwise, the entire city would be subjected to one day a week. So because of that, we've basically got an area of the city that's got an exclusion and the rest of the city that does not.
Brittany, you're on speaker.
Hi, thanks so much for taking, um, my question. I was wondering, um, I heard Robin's comments about spending some money on river rock. I also have been interested in alternative ground covering. I feel like the most, um, water waste is trying to keep this grass alive during the summer, but even myself trying to research what alternative ground cover would be best for our zone for it still to be comfortable for kids to play on. It seems like there's so many nuances. Um, and so is there any state or conservation organizations or possibly the opportunity for us to do it ourselves to provide helpful information? information and possibly the seeds themselves to residents who would be interested in saving out grass into native California grass covering? Thanks.
So, real quick to answer that, in general, Metropolitan Water District, they're gonna be the best ones to run through to see, especially if you wanna play for rebates. So they can tell you what's allowable, what's not allowable, um, and at the end of the day, it's really gonna be dependent, if she has children, if she wants to use that as a playable space, obviously putting river rock everywhere probably not gonna be the best option for children, um, but, um, even turf sometimes, if you're putting in fake turf, sometimes that's all, not always the best option for your children. They could be allergic to certain types of products that are out there. So unfortunately, you gotta do your research, talk to Metropolitans, see what they can apply for, um, but I, I agree. We've looked at other, you know, alternatives in, in the city. Um, we did some of that up at Wheeler Park, there's a small corner where we did, um, uh, we got rid of everything and put mulch in. So we do look at those options, and I would say in general, anytime we put in new landscape, it's drought tolerant. Uh, what we did on foothill, what we're doing on Arrow Highway, anything that we, we put in in the future, we do look at as drought tolerant as opposed to turf. We, turf is really not gonna be an option in the, for some of those areas, so...
Is it possible to put that link on our webpage?
Yeah, it's already up there.
It's already up there?
Yep, it is, and it will, we will also push that out...
Tracy, why should I even question?
Yeah, we will also push that information out with, with our notifications.
Totally, I'm so sorry for even assuming it wasn't done that way. So basically, we'll direct our residents to look on the website, there's, uh, they give the rebates. I must, and say it loudly, that if you're gonna do a rebate, you better get on there now, because the problem is, and remember last time, Tracy, that the funds ran out extremely quickly, and they are very strict on your rebates and how you do it. Don't do it and then file for a rebate. You have to file it all the way across the way. If you're gonna do something, you have to submit, and there's, there's rules that you have to follow or else you won't get the rebate. So, anyway, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other? We're gonna close public comment again. We'll go back up to the dais. Counsel. Then I think, uh, we need to figure out which one we're gonna do. I, I do prefer the, uh, freedom of the residents for a 20% reduction. I think it's a little draconian when we start pushing it, and I also wanna go along with what the fire department thinks is a better idea for us to make sure that we, uh, as we know in our north area, it's pretty bad, and, uh, it's gonna get even worse. And so, we wanna be safe, make sure our residents are safe, but make sure that we all are on a 20% reduction. So, with that. Counsel.
So, can I just ask a clarifying question of the chief? Um, so if it is three days a week, is that better for fire prevention than a one day a week in your, in your...
One day a week is lower, is below baseline.
I'm a below baseline.
Above baseline is either three days a week or just a reduction of 20%.
Or 20%, or 20%.
Okay.
20%.
So, okay, so it would still be... Okay, so...
Sorry.
Thank you, Chief. You were just there to stand there.
Uh-oh. Where's his badge?
I mean, just to touch, kind of, I mean, you clarified it up, but I, I do believe that, um, going to 20% is a little bit less, um, aggressive, if you will, than just going to a numbered level of days. Obviously, we still have a goal that we're trying to achieve, but, uh, like we mentioned through this process, uh, when Sean and I were kind of working through this, um, you know, the intent is to obviously save water, but it, you know, you either have live vegetation or dead vegetation, and, you know, the intent is to try and keep it, it alive as much as possible. Um, the reality is that any reduction in watering much of this landscape is gonna result in some sort of drying out of that vegetation, so, uh, in my professional opinion, the most amount of water that we can keep on that por, portion of our city, um, is better, certainly.
Thank you, Chief Nick.
So that would be option one?
Yes.
One, one, one.
Yeah.
One, 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 one. So...
Yeah, I think, I, I join you, Mayor, in suggesting that our residents can step, step up to the cause and, and what, use water prudently seven days a week rather than requesting that they only use it three days a week. So, I'd be in support of making a motion to pass ordinance 1111, 1111. I'm sorry.
I need, can we second on that one?
I'll second it, but just clarification, it's only our residents in the higher fire zone above baseline. Right, yes. Just wanna make sure it hit that hard. Just, just in the very high fire hazard sensitivity zone.
Will this be up on our website?
That'd be a good idea.
Okay, we are going to put the map up on our website as to the area that's excluded from...
And our residents, you cannot cut and paste. You cannot do that.
Somehow my house got up there.
We have a second? Shall we vote?
Yes.
So do we have a motion to pass?
Yes.
Motion carries. We approve ordinance number 1111 unanimously.
An urgency ordinance of the City Council, um, amending sections 1315 dot oh four oh and 13 dot 15 dot oh four three of chapter 1315 of the Water Conservation Use and Restriction Code.
That's a lot. Now, we are gonna bounce backwards on item seven, on item B, which is the 2022-23 Comprehensive Fee Schedule. Thank you, staff, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tracy, watch that water.
She doesn't have to have a recess to leave.
No. And who's gonna report on this one?
I will take this one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Um, as is customary, every year, as part of the budget process, staff looks at the fees that we charge, um, for the various services we provide to ensure that we are collecting the appropriate amount based on the cost of providing those services. Um, we're bringing this forward, um, as the annual hearing for your consideration, and, uh, by way of reminder, this was a continuation from last meeting because we weren't ready, it was posted for last meeting, and we weren't ready to, to submit it to you at that time. Um, essentially, there are very few changes. There is one, um, on the special event permit process where we identified a need to have a fee for permits that were denied, but the individuals chose to hold the event anyways. Um, we realized that there was no way for us to capture for costs that we would've had to incurred to, to shut down the event that was otherwise denied, so we added a section for that. But then in addition to that, the other changes are primarily in the fire department, and I'll credit the fire chief for, um, as part of his fresh look, um, at the department and assessing where some of the, the costs have not necessarily been captured or to the full extent. Um, he is bringing forward some recommendations of changes on where we can improve in that area. One of the specific areas was to add a non-resident charge in our medical and transport fee. Um, this will be above what it would be for the cost of, um, providing medical or transport to an individual that's a non-resident, um, and would fill some of that gap that we're otherwise not collecting with those other fees. Um, some of the other fees that are listed, um, under plan review are specific fees rather than we had been charging a deposit and then charging with the actual cost based on a new contract that we've executed. These will be the flat fees for those, so the, the resident will know coming in exactly what they're gonna fee, pay for whatever those particular inspections are. Um, the only other area of highlight is, is it relates to our annual business inspections. In evaluating what we were collecting, it did not, um, rise to the level of what it is that the actual costs are for whether it's an engine company that is going out there or the fire marshal is going to have to do it. And we've kind of cleaned up that process and identified, anything below 11,000 square feet would be done by an engine company, anything over that or has some special circumstances will be turned over to the fire marshal to do that level of inspection. Um, and those are the highlights of the changes, and I would like to at least point out, there will be one more that will be coming, we'll be amending this, um, in the coming month, and that's because, um, a, as part of the chief's evaluation, there are some other fees that aren't listed at this point, and we have an agreement that still hasn't been approved by council. So we'll be bringing that to your annual agreement next year, and we'll be amending the fee schedule with some updates, basically as it relates to being able to charge for traffic collisions and things of that nature that, where we have a response and a call associated to, so there's a, a list of fees that, uh, we will be, um, hiring an agency to assist with, uh, collection of those. So, we'll bring that back as a supplemental to this, and I, I just wanted you to be aware that this is primarily everything else and, uh, that we would be requesting a fee adjustment with.
I personally, I appreciate this because for many years, we, the fee adjustments were, um, it didn't really spell them out, and I think this was extremely well done. And not only that, I appreciate the input from the chief and also from all the departments and Director Pendleton, because we don't wanna fee people to death, but we have to charge for our fees in order for our city to grow, and as we're growing, those fees are very important. And we must capture every fee that we have for developers, and not only for the fees for, I know that the businesses get upset sometimes, but I think we're in a different time now where we need to protect our businesses just as we do for our residents. And we've had some fires in our residences lately, which is very disturbing, and, uh, it displaces people, it can cause death, it can also cause death to our employees. And so I think moving forward with this, it's really good that we have a fee structure that's gonna capture this, but ultimately, it's for the safety of our residents, and I do appreciate that a lot. And I think we're focusing on that. And also updating these fees to current, because years go by and all of a sudden, it's just like me running my business, if I kept my fees the same 10 years ago, it doesn't work well. You have to update the fees with the current structure and the current cost. So, uh, I, I appreciate it. I just wanted to comment on that, 'cause, um, it was done well, extremely well, you can read it, you redlined what the parts were changed, and I really appreciate that. There was no guess, you know, so, but, any comments or questions before we go to public comment?
I'll just ebb at your remarks.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment. They're all looking at me like, yeah? They look like they had too much wine at the wine walk. That's all I wanna say. Um, any, any questions or comments or nothing on the horn? Do we have any emails? You two over there?
Thank you.
None. We'll go ahead and close public comment, and we're gonna bring up the dais, comments from the council.
And, and I just reiterate what you were saying, too. Um, when I called and was asking about the reasons why the, the fee's moving up and the explanation what Bob and, uh, Chief, uh, Nig's been saying is, uh, especially for the businesses, because those rates grew so dramatically, um, really wanted the, um, explanation for it. But it's the personnel that's going out there, and we need to make sure the cost of that, that personnel, uh, is, is being covered for that service. So, appreciate the, um, explanation to understand why it's growing so significantly.
Wow. We're stoic. Okay, and I, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2022-2023 Comprehensive Fee Schedule.
I'll second it.
Second? All those vote, please? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, staff, great job. Thank you very much. We move to public comments and oral communications. We have some comments from the, from the audience, and I don't have any. Mr. Gabeldon? Unless, unless, unless he was leaving, I'm not...
Door's that way.
I'm not going anywhere.
Yet.
Um, first of all, I'd like to reiterate what I heard earlier about the wine walk and thank the residents who tolerated all the folks parking in their yards. Um, it, it, it was, it was a big contribution to why it was successful, 'cause there was places to park and for people to walk to their cars, um, as opposed to, you know, staying away because they couldn't find a place to park. On some of the things that I've noticed, uh, the Wildland Fire Plan, since we're talking about fire safety, 50% water reductions, um, things like that, in my opinion, the best way to avoid expenses is to plan to avoid expenses, and I'm wondering why that plan is still dated 2014. Weather hasn't gotten better for us in the last number of years, so I'm hoping that we address that, and I'm sure Chief Nig and his staff will, but, um, out of sight, out of mind, but I know I've brought that up before. And then, um, kind of in my journey these days, the one thing I've noticed that I feel needs more attention, and it's not to be, um, uh, kind of, uh, picky about things, but I think it is important to safety, since everybody likes to talk about safety in our city, is the traffic safety relative to speed. So Esperanza and Wheeler are racetracks. Basically, Wheeler people from the foothill stop, stoplight going north are in takeoff mode, and especially with electric vehicles now. Um, some you can hear when they're driving up the, the hill in their, with their, uh, big engine cars, and the electric vehicles, you cannot, and those cars are getting up the hill way too fast. And I think we need to do something about bringing awareness, um, not being penalty-driven, but awareness-driven. And I think Esperanza, since I personally experienced it, I do not live there, that cars coming down that hill are literally out of control because they're gathering so much speed now because we've raised the speed limit in that area. And now, what I came to learn is there's two new families there with kids, and all we need, I don't think anybody ever wants to hear, that a young family had a child who was not familiar with the neighborhood, the family was not familiar with the traffic patterns in that area, that their kid kicked the ball out in the street, went in the street, and then are we gonna be worried about the 35 mile an hour speed limit, 30 mile an hour speed limit? What are we gonna be worried about then? So I suggest that we actually look into what's going on, on that air, the Esperanza downgrade in particular, uh, and do something for those people there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabeldon. You're staring at me really closely on that, 'cause I come down that road. Was it me? I don't think so. It was the other guy. I don't have an electric car, so there you go. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Bowen.
Counsel? I just wondering if we can get an update. I remember, um, I think towards the end of last year, there was, uh, quite a big, uh, issue regarding, uh, the teen center and ass, and taking over part of the Los Flores Park potentially, but if I remember right, um, the, certain council members indicated that we're gonna try to get a grant and that we'd already spent $80,000 on, on architectural fees, I believe, and, uh, but we were gonna apply for a grant, and if we did not get that grant money, that, um, the whole issue of the teen center was, was a moot point. I heard recently that we were denied that grant, and I'm wondering if, if anybody, uh, perhaps the city manager can confirm that, so in fact, the teen center is in fact a dead issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Anyone else? Oh. Mr. Allison. Bring him on.
Uh, thank you to all the vendors and everybody who helped make the wine walk a success. I got out with my wife and was able to enjoy the downtown area. Uh, it's just one of the many examples, I think, of how we come together and put on really good events, uh, for our family, so, thank you to all the vendors, thank you to all of the, uh, store owners in downtown, uh, who made this possible. We really enjoyed ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Anyone else? Close. Nothing.
Thank you.
That would be no answer. I'm pulling up my calendar of events on here to make sure we don't miss anything, 'cause our city staff does a really great job trying to keep us, I ask for a calendar, 'cause I never know what the heck's going on, even if you put in your, in your own calendar. We will close public comment.
I will, if the council would like, I'll answer the question on the...
Yes, please.
...uh, grant, uh, application, and yes, that grant application was denied. However, I, the project still exists, it's just not funded to a full extent at this point, so it's, lives on our CIP, as council is aware of, um, and until further action, I think it just remains there, um, and we'll continue to pursue grant opportunities to that, uh, for that effort.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Who would like to start? Councilman Carter?
I will. A week ago Friday was the Laverne Day at the county fair, and it was really nice. I, and, uh, they're happy to be open once again, so I hope everybody gets out to the county fair. They're open through May 25th, is, that the date? Does anyone remember? But do check, there's limited days that they're open, it's not all week long, so please go on their website. Beautiful website, explains everything they've got going on, concert series, you can buy tickets, and we wanna support the county fair. They've had a hard time over the last couple of years, and they're so thrilled to be open, and the new director is just really a great guy, and he works with our city quite a bit. Um, the other part is, I've been gone for the last 10 days, as I said, I went to Gettysburg and... As I said, I went to Gettysburg and Washington DC. And when I went to the monument for Lincoln, one of the sayings I saw, I just loved, and it was, "A house divided will not stand." And it just really made me think about our city. We have such a great city. Obviously, we all chose to live here in Laverne and buy our homes. And I've been very happy with how the council meetings have been going lately. It's been business first, taking care of it, community involvement, and I thank everyone for that. That's very important. It's just, I want to keep that going. We need to focus that. We are all like a family here in Laverne. We need to do and give guidance to council. And as I said, when I do step down, I plan on attending meetings and keeping you accountable. But, you know, that's what we're for. We're to work together as a team, and we love to hear from people of what should be done. We have a great fire chief, we have a new police, police chief, and department heads that are just outstanding. Our city has never been so cohesive, working together. I'm just, I'm just thrilled where we are right now. And I'm proud to say that this is our city. The last thing I'd like to say is, I have a request. A resident called me and asked, and I thought, yeah, it's about time. It's been a while, good couple of years, that our dispatch moved from just Laverne dispatch to where we use county services to. So they wanted to know if we could have an update. They watched the meeting all the time, they can't come. And so they wanted to see if we could have an update on how it's going, just really, you know, what our services are. They wanted to understand, they, you know, just didn't get involved before. But she said she wanted to understand, how does it work? You call 911, what happens? So if we could just have a report, either fire, police, or staff giving a report, explaining that, and then just saying whether it's going well, it's not what, where we are with that.
I can work with, probably more appropriate through the fire chief, but I will work with chief on coordinating, getting something for council.
Mr. Crosby.
Thank you. Short tonight, I just really appreciate the POW MIA chair. I just applaud the craftsmanship that is made and still continuing to be done to that chair, and really appreciate that coming to our city and honoring our veterans and our military, and especially the people that are missing. And that presentation today was very moving, so that's my only comment tonight.
Councilman Ralston.
I just want to reiterate, the fair is back in full effect, and I know this because I live right by it, so I get to hear the concerts all the time, which is actually nice, it doesn't bother me.
Drake's at your house.
But it is, it was a really fun event, so if you get a chance to go back out, that would be great. The other thing I did want to mention was, you know, we've been hearing all these things with the proclamations about the different things that we're celebrating this month. I don't know if you're on social media at all, but our police department did note that it was National Peace Officers Memorial Day. Sorry, that took me a minute to get out. And it's also kicked off National Police Week this week. And so I think the takeaway that we can all think about when we're having all these proclamations and these celebrations that we're acknowledging is that, you know, we're all different, but there is really something special about each and every group, and that we should take the time to appreciate each other. Because I do think that sometimes it's too easy to think about the negative things or to think about how we can criticize someone. And really, I think everyone is trying to do their best, and they all bring something to the table. And I know that, you know, again, I always say, we don't always see eye to eye, but I always appreciate the folks who come, who engage in different ways, whether they can be here in person or not. So just think about that as we go through. May is a very full month. I would also say we're heading into the end of the year, and we've got students who are going to prom next week, we've got commencement and graduations, and so it's a very fun celebratory time of the year. So, you know, think about those folks as you are going about your day as well. And the last thing I will leave is a, sort of a, just a FYI PSA, is that for those people that could not make it to the candidate's forum that occurred on Thursday, the 12th, it is on YouTube, so you can get it. And I believe it's now linked on our city website as well, and the speeches that the various candidates prepared through LVTV. So those are all available.
Those are correct statements, yes.
Okay, perfect. And I note that just because I know sometimes people can't make it out, whether because they're putting kids to bed, or they're doing things, or work is running late, or you're stuck in traffic. I don't want people not to be engaged or to not know. It is available, please take a look. So that is all. Have a good rest of your week.
Thank you.
Before you move on, the date of the fair ending is May 30th. So I was able to look at it. Yes.
Right. Through Memorial Day weekend, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis, you got that one? Go.
And I appreciate everybody's remarks, and I'm going to flavor it similarly, slightly different, because I too had to miss L.A., Laverne Day at L.A. County Fair to see my son graduate up in Logan, Utah, from Utah State University. That was a wonderful day, but I'm going to make sure I go to the fair at least two or three times to make up for missing that. I also missed the wine walk because my daughter was dancing with the D Street Dance Group at the Bonita Center for the Arts. So there, you know, it's one of those things where we're lucky enough and fortunate enough that we have to make challenging decisions, because apparently I might be missing a softball game on June 2nd, which would really be a bummer, because, you know, that'd be a fun game to go to. But the Pomona Valley Transportation Authority that I chair passed its annual budget for next year, so those services will be available for get about and other services offered, not only by Laverne, but San Dimas, Claremont, and Pomona. I agree that the candidate forums, and I got to participate in two so far, along with Steve Johnson, we got to perform in a District One forum at Hillcrest, and then we had the joint one with everybody last Thursday night. And unfortunately, Hillcrest is not available online, but the All City one is available on YouTube. And for those who don't want to use a computer but have access to Spectrum, will be broadcast on Channel 3 occasionally. Not sure what the dates and hours for those broadcasts are. But thanks for being here, everybody. It's a lot of fun things to do in Laverne. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Davis. This is also Military Appreciation Month, so I want to thank Councilmember Carter for the Chairs of Honor. That was a very, very noble thing you did to celebrate all of our military heritage and so important for those 83,000 people that never returned. And I think it's just a wonderful tribute to our community, so thank you very much. That was, that was a really, really nice move on your part to make that happen. You did well, you put the mic. That's right. Oh, I'm trained all right. No question about that. Teacher of the Year banquet award is this Thursday. I think it's at Mountain Meadows. Yeah, that's this Thursday. And so some of us will be attending, and I think I'll be attending. A girl's softball, Go Bearcat Nation. I tell you, our Bonita Sports is just incredible. We have just been rocking the boat, and especially the girls have just been taking off. Now, I know that the boys did a second round CIF last week, and they lost on their, on their second round, but all the sports have been doing fantastic. It just shows that we have great students, but great parents and great coaches in a great school district, so we're all blessed to be in the Bonita Unified School District. And again, thank you for everybody that showed. I know that it wasn't as many people as we would expect for our candidate forum, but I think people are still just afraid of coming out and going outside and coming into a closed area. So, but, you know, we move through it slowly and get back to some normalcy. As Mr. Davis, I was not able to attend, I was babysitting with my wife, a two-year-old in San Marcos, so, but anything we do in this city for any of the functions we do is just successful. And Director Shear, I know that that's a big one for you guys, that you really had that up. And I just want the beer walk now, so just hurry up. Because, you know, but anyway, our.
No two-year-old in that night.
And not only that, I know. But I would say that in your estimation, the people from outside the area, how many?
Well, I don't know, I don't have the access to the ticket sales, so they were all online, so it's really hard to say. Obviously, I saw a lot of membership community that.
But it's a nice mix. Because every time we've ever had it, it's always been these people from everywhere, from 20, 30 miles out come to visit our little city, which is great. Really, that's it. I thank you all for attending, and I appreciate all of our staff, especially our fee structure and our water. Director Igo, although it's painful, but we have to do it. And our, we have our next, we have a presentation on June 6th at 4:30 PM, presentation of the 2022-23 budget, city council. Say that again. And then our next regular scheduled meeting is June 6th at 6:30 PM. We will adjourn at 8:22 PM.